All right, well, we'll start without Susie.
So I guess, um, because you're actually an alternate master.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and Guy is actually now.
Guy has decided not, his term ran out, and he decided not to re-up his term.
Well, we have a vacancy then.
Yep.
Well, actually, we have plenty of vacancies, because we can have five alternates.
Oh, my, we have plenty of vacancies. Do we have any volunteers?
All right, let's get started then.
Okay, I'll take him in. Attendants, Marty Bender.
Present.
Robert Drown.
Present.
Barbara Corliss.
Present.
Robert Clages.
Present.
Dee Blake. And Susan Roberts is absent at the moment, but we expect her.
Okay, um, so, um, do you want to read the application?
I can do that. Where is the application? Do I have the application?
Sure. Should be page two.
Looking for a paragraph of the application.
No, it's just the... It's just this. They're asking for a special exception.
Application, is it John, J O N, and Don Silly?
Correct.
Of Tilton, um, applying for a special exception to Article Five, Section Five, adding an approved accessory dwelling unit in the basement of the home.
Okay, so, um, well, let's, I'll tell you what the process is first, and then we'll start asking the questions. So anyway, the first thing we do is I have you present everything that you want to do, okay? After you have told us exactly what it is that you're planning on, we will interrupt you at all times with lots of questions. Then I will listen to anybody else who wants to speak in, you know, with your process. Then we have anybody who wishes to speak in opposition. Chance to rebuttal by you, chance to rebuttal by the opposed. Then we close the hearing. We open it up to discussion by the board. The board will, generally, will issue our decision tonight. You then have, you or the opposition has thirty days in which to file an app... An appeal to it. And we would have to either grant your exception, your application, anyway. And after that, you have thirty days in which to file with the Superior Court. So, why don't you go ahead and start and tell us exactly what you wish to plan.
So, the essential plan for the entire downstairs of the apartment is in the packets, I believe, that you have in front of you. We moved into Webster, March of 2023. We have a medically complex daughter who is blind and is unable to live on her own. And so the intent is to have supervised residence within the building, where she can have her independence, but was with us. Since then, we've had some tragedies in the family, and we're relocating back to the Lake Region where we're from.
So, but your daughter is going to stay?
No. We have done the work. Chief Ebbett has been there, the police chief has been there. We've had a lot of stuff going on in the house. So unfortunately, we were planning to retire here in Webster. Everything was great, it's not. So this is now getting the, so we can sell the property with an A D U in it.
With this, with this in the unit?
Yes.
So in other words, this is not going to be for the family?
No, it is not going to be our family in there.
And it doesn't have to be. So you don't live there, you don't plan to live there, and it's already constructed?
It is already constructed. We have been living there.
It's already there.
You've already built the A D O?
Yes, yes. Emmett's seen it, the police chief has seen it. Unfortunately, now we have to relocate. We are planning on staying here for...
The forever home.
It was. We relocated down here, the house was built. It was a perfect opportunity for our daughter to have that supervised living, but the independence of that living. And there's been a lot of tragedies since then. So unfortunately, we need to move back.
I'm sorry to hear that, and I'm also sorry to hear that you're not living there, because according to the rules, you have to be, to have that accessory.
We are currently living there right now.
Dwelling unit.
So we are currently living there for the approval process.
House is on the market?
It is not on the market yet. So that meets the intent of that part of it.
Just wanted to refresh my memory.
Yeah.
Is this all built now, or are you just?
It is all.
It's all built already?
Yes.
But no one is inhabiting it? His daughter is.
No, no, right now, we have relocated from the area, and we are planning to sell it, yes.
So the house is empty right now?
For the most part. But it is not on the market yet.
And this, this wasn't previously approved before it was built?
No.
But the problem is selling it without an approved accessory dwelling unit?
Correct.
Has it been approved for life and fire safety code?
Yes, we have had the deputy chief from Webster over there, we have had Ebbett there, we have had the police chief there, everyone has been there at one time or another.
The deputy chief is my son.
Yep, he had, he went over there and approved it, yes.
Guess I can't fight with him. The rest of my questions, is it under seven hundred and fifty square feet?
Uh, yes.
How much is it?
Whatever, I don't.
What's the size of the house?
No, 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 the accessory dwelling.
It should be in the pack, unfortunately, I've had...
It doesn't say.
Okay, I'm sorry, our realtor was supposed to be, a family member was supposed to be coming in, they backed out last minute, so I'm kind of shooting blind right now with no cell service to call them. Sorry. It is about... Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't give you the exact dimension.
What's the, what's the tall dimensions of the house, do you know? Garage and all?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
I can't read it, probably can't, but I can't read it.
Thirty-one by sixty.
Okay, so...
Thirty-one by sixty? So if you took the garage, you took twenty feet out for each of the garage?
I get eleven hundred and seventy-eight feet, when I do the math.
Eleven hundred and seventy-eight.
That's what I get, but I, uh...
What is the problem? Eleven hundred, that's way too much.
Way too much.
Yep.
If this is, if this is accurate and I did my math right. Do you know how big your garage is?
Big, it's oversized. I can put up my full-size pickup and a plow on the front of it in the garage.
Okay, because, because when I did the math on this, it's only twenty feet deep, which seems pretty, pretty shallow, you're not getting a plow truck in twenty feet.
No, I can park a plow truck, the plow inside as well. And I have a workbench at the end of it, and we have a cabinet and a refrigerator at the end.
It's got to be at least thirty feet deep.
Yeah.
If not...
But how, why? Because if this is the first floor, we need to know what this is.
If it's thirty by thirty, it's over nine hundred.
That is, yeah.
It's too big.
You'd have to take out utilities in the stairs, probably.
There is a central stairway that comes down, and then the hallway that also goes out to the garage, independent.
Is this all above grade, the basement, or is it sort of?
It's a half and half. So the main level of the house is above the concrete.
Yeah.
And then the downstairs is the garage and where we plan to have her supervised there.
And you have two entrances, one of these rooms?
Yes, yep.
And I suspect you had the sewage system checked for an additional bathroom when you did this construction?
We built it for the bathrooms that we had.
I think I'm being clear. The sewage system will support the number of bedrooms and bathrooms in the house.
Yes, yep.
Can I ask, how come you didn't apply for this before you built it?
I bought it from a realtor, we expected it, and like I said, we moved in. Emmett came over when we first moved in, we thought everything was great. I flat out, I'll tell you, I've had a grand, uh, father-in-law that died there, and I had a daughter that died there, okay? I've gone farther than I wanted to go with this, so I'm sorry, you're now going to get the other side of me. I need to be out of that house, okay? And because of that, Emmett, the police chief, are all on board. We submitted the paperwork, our family member who deals with, submitted the paperwork. Everything should have been very simple. Unfortunately, I don't have a phone to call them and say, get their tails down here to finish what they started, but it is what it is, and that's why this is a special exception rather than waiting until the next board meeting, okay? Unfortunately, now you get to see the other side of me, and it's unfortunate that something that we thought was going to be a very easy pass with everything we submitted, even Emmett was on board with this. I don't know what happened, I mean, we talked to Dana, we talked, we submitted everything, and now all of a sudden, there's concerns.
How long ago did this get finished?
A while ago, a long time ago. Shortly after we moved in, we finished, we worked on it after we had moved in. We bought the property.
Couple of years.
Yeah, you said, you said twenty twenty-three.
We moved in there in March of twenty twenty-three, um, and we are trying to get out of there now, less than two years, unfortunately.
So the accessory dwelling unit was completed after twenty twenty-three, that's my question.
Yes, yes, yes. When we moved in, it was not in at that time. We built it afterwards, and then the deputy chief came over and inspected it to make sure that it would meet all codes.
Fire codes.
Fire codes, correct, absolutely, the fire codes.
Life and safety.
Life and safety code, correct.
And you have a paper for that that says that too, don't you, or something?
I'd have to work with the realtor.
Okay, he has it though, he has it though.
It was inspected, yes.
He's looking for a special exception, can we do anything for him under a, what do I want to call it? Emergency grant or anything like that?
I don't think we have the power to do that. We have no authority to, to grant something that's outside of the code. Am I missing something?
Why is it outside of the code?
Footage. It's over seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Oh, it's nine hundred, minimum of nine hundred and something. If the garage is thirty feet long, the rest of it's a minimum of nine hundred and something.
It's too big.
Oh, we think it's too big, but I'm not sure this is right either, so...
Yeah, we, yeah, we don't have the exact, how to read and know this.
I don't exactly know what the square footage is that way.
So, yeah, so we're just kind of guessing, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, it's strange.
I should have brought...
I'm sorry, I didn't bring a pack.
But you can see some here, but I can't see what the dimensions are of the, of the entire house. I was thinking maybe this, I could figure out how to subtract the garage from it, but I don't think I can.
I pulled it up on my screen so I could read it before, but there's no way the garage is the size it says.
So I don't have that map in front of me. Like I said, we have a realtor family, a construction person who helped us put together this whole packet, because we have not been in a good place for everything. If you look at where the side entry door is, literally, you go another two feet, and that is the wall that separates the living room from the garage. And that door, I believe, is down on that far side. Literally, it goes another, because it is there, you have the transom on the side of the door, and then you have two feet, and then that's the wall with the TV on it that separates it from the garage.
We just need to know, how big is this?
I don't have that with me, I'm sorry, I'm not in a good place to deal with that. That's why we had someone else do it who backed out, that I'm going to go talk to shortly after.
It's there, but there's writing, it's so small, I can't read it.
I was thinking, I'm going to pack a magnifying glass in this.
Um, if you take a picture with a phone, can you blow it up?
Yeah, it actually comes out okay.
Does it?
Did you do it that way?
Would it come out on the end, across the end?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, just an idea.
I'm sorry, I was not prepared for this. I had someone who was coming, who is an expert in this, that was supposed to be prepared, and then...
The realtor?
They do realtor.
It's okay.
We understand.
Well, I didn't even want to discuss that part of it. It got, unfortunately, too many questions, I had to finally say it. The realtor and the construction people who built the house, they were, one of them was supposed to be here tonight.
I just feel bad before you and your position, and we run into a snag.
Mm-hmm, I understand.
We can't figure out a way to handle it. Are you snapping pictures?
I did. I believe it's, it's easier to do this way, to zoom in. So it's thirty-one foot one.
The garage?
Yeah, wide.
Wide?
And the house is sixty even long.
Thirty times, thirty times sixty would be eighteen hundred.
Upstairs.
That, yeah, that's your full footprint, right?
Does that include the garage?
Including the garage.
Including the garage.
Downstairs, that would, the garage is part of that downstairs footprint too.
So I'm looking, how wide is the garage?
Thirty-one.
Thirty. Oh, I'm sorry, and it is sixty com...
The whole house is sixty.
And the other dimension?
How deep is the garage?
How deep's the garage, can you tell?
There's two dimensions on here that I have to...
I think I see it here, I just can't read it.
So the two dimensions are ten, six, and eleven, four, which doesn't make sense.
Twenty-one, twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet, and you're not, like a truck with a plow is going to...
No, I can fit my truck anywhere.
You might get that in there in twenty-two feet, but you couldn't walk around it.
I can get my foot in.
But he's got like a workbench and a bunch of stuff.
I have a workbench at the end of it as well.
So I think they're, I think this is awful.
Look at this, can you, can you see that?
Yeah, thirty-one's it.
Thirty-one's the top one. That, the bottom number is the distance between the center of the two doors.
So, can I ask, are you planning to sell this, like with a, your house, like with an apartment underneath? Is that the problem?
With the A D, A D U for the real estate, yes.
Okay, all right.
With the A D U listing.
I'm sorry?
With the A D U listing on it, yes.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
I called Emmett, do you want me to continue? He said that they did the inspection, but your accessory apartment wasn't in at the time. But he also, I asked him if he knew how big it was, and he said he couldn't guess.
No, because why would Emmett have been taking measurements?
Right, right, no, 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 I just thought if I could help...
No, I appreciate that, and thank you.
And he, he would help if he could.
I could call Jake, but he wouldn't know either.
Right, 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 yeah. Because why would those guys have measured?
Well, Jake would have had to because of, um, being able to get in and out and, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
What, yeah, he'd had to, you know, take and put every door where it had to be, the staircase where it had to be, make sure it had a rail on the staircase. He's got to do all of that to, to make them, um...
We need exterior dimensions, and subtracting the garage. And even then, it really looks like it's over, it's too big.
I think if you take it, how big's that utility room? That looks like impossibly narrow in this picture.
It is very narrow. It's about, the utility room, I can get in there and I can change out the filter.
Yeah.
It's less than five feet deep. It is very narrow.
But it's fairly long, right?
Yeah, it goes, um, from the corner.
Ten feet?
Well, it looks like about halfway.
It goes, yeah, it goes quite a distance up.
Um, are you saying you have no cell phone service here?
I do not.
You're, okay, I, my cell phone does work here, would you like to call somebody?
Sure.
Here you are.
Absolutely would like that, thank you, I appreciate that.
You want a Bud Light to go with it?
No. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm happy to do it, uh, phone's right there. And if you want to yell at them, then...
No, I'm not going to yell at them, with the people here. I'll stop by their house afterward and do that.
Okay. We can open the door, put you outside.
No. Sorry, I was not expecting...
My last provider, this was a cell phone dead zone, so I changed to AT&amp;T, I don't have any problems.
Almost no one else.
Yeah, AT&amp;T, period.
Although TDS looks like, they have cell phone service that's just, they're just reselling...
US Cellular has service.
You've got who?
US Cellular.
Oh, really?
TDS looks like, that's the same company.
I just went to AT&amp;T and went to Mobile. I had T-Mobile, and I had no bars in downtown Concord, New Hampshire. Like, I just had to put a Wi-Fi hotspot in my house.
Because I had Verizon, you know.
Is it Ring?
Never, and I said never.
No, it's Ring.
Oh, it is Ring?
Surprised.
I don't have my service.
Leave a message.
They don't recognize the number, okay?
Probably.
And it's been perfect, and it's way, way cheap.
Second half of the family, and nothing to answer.
I had Verizon for years and years, and they were just about everywhere. And, but they were charging me forty dollars a month more than AT&amp;T.
Yeah, but right, yeah.
Why do I do this?
The tax record on that's white. I can do that right here.
And tell, and tell us what the footage is?
It's possible.
Also...
They'll tell us the...
Maybe pull it up?
Maybe go and get the building plans.
There you go.
Now that I think about it, and then we could pull down what it was before the A D U was put in.
There's a lot of questions down here at the zoning board. Are you, have they been able to come down and help with some of these questions? Size, things like that? They have questions about the size of the accessory dwelling unit, that, the size of the garage. I know, but they, they're saying that it's too big for, to be a A D U approved.
No, it's seven fifty.
It's got to be less than seven fifty.
They're saying it has to be less than seven fifty.
It probably is under nine hundred, once you take this stuff out.
Well, let's see if we can find out.
That's not going to help. It's not close to that, yeah, I don't think it's enough stuff to take out to get to seven fifty.
Half the board. Uh, most of the planning board. I know. Sorry. They're saying it's seven fifty. So they just, they have questions, I'm trying to answer what I can. Sure. Thank you. Bye. So one of them will come down in five minutes.
Now, is this the realtor?
This is the contractor and the realtor's down in Huffington. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was not prepared for this.
You're all right, don't, don't get nervous, we'll see what we can do.
What are the axes here, are they Duckworth or?
I don't have a copy of it, because I just...
Obviously, those could come out square footage, too.
They say thirty-two by twenty is the garage.
I know, that's where the washer is.
Thirty-two by twenty?
That's washer.
That's six hundred and forty.
Bathroom, stackable washer dryer.
Forty by thirty-two is...
I couldn't hear you.
Forty by thirty-two is the rest.
Dishwasher.
It'll be twelve hundred.
But I can tell you that that wall is a lot closer to that door.
You're good with math, Bobby.
More like this lolly dorm, probably something over here.
Exactly, it's literally two feet past that door is that wall.
That makes, that would make more sense to me than if it shifts down.
That's what I said. That is it.
No, that's not necessarily accurate.
Well, that's what they would have measured for tax purposes.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred, yes, not even close.
Not even close.
Sorry for tying up everyone's time here.
Okay, that's what we're here for, right?
Mm-hmm.
And oh, by the way, this is the first one this year, so...
We have it as the garage attached is six hundred and forty, and the effective area of the raised basement is eight hundred and thirty-two square feet.
Okay, repeat that, the eight hundred and thirty-two is what?
The effective area.
So that's without garage?
Without the garage.
That's without the garage, and the dustel doesn't count the crawl space or any of that stuff.
Eight hundred and thirty, so perhaps the dwell, the accessory dwelling unit is eight hundred and thirty-two?
And then we could take out...
More, probably less than, because you said there was a couple other things.
There's a stairway as well as a hallway.
Take out the utility.
Yeah, I was looking in the utility room, but you can't do that, can you?
The hallway and the stairway you can, because they're not part of that. It's a shared, it's a common space.
Technically, maybe technically. Well, can they, do they have to count the common hallway to get to the garage too, right? Because, so this is the... So if this door is closed... You can only get to this part of the house, right? So...
This and that, correct.
Right, and this, this is closed off for a stairwell to get to the garage.
That is the second egress from the, that living space, that hallway is the second egress.
So this is the...
This is the door to the accessory dwelling. So this becomes, this part becomes, sorry, this is the door. This part becomes common space, right, because it's shared?
How is it shared, it goes upstairs?
Right, they use it to come downstairs.
To get to the garage.
And then there's a door here that is the accessory dwelling unit entrance, and this is shared also.
Yeah, we even had a stair chair in the stairway because of our daughter's accessibility and stuff.
I don't think that counts as part of the accessory dwelling unit, the common space hallway, I don't believe.
That might be the answer.
And then mechanical is shared, so I don't think you count that as part of the accessory dwelling unit either.
What is in the utilities room?
In the utilities room is one of those mini furnace, it's a gas-fired hot water system, which is for the floorboards and the hot water. The expansion chamber for the well coming in, filter, soap filter, another filter, and then it goes into one of those wall mount furnace on-demand systems type of thing that has manifolds coming off of it for the baseboard heat.
Like, oh, for heat?
It's heat and hot water.
And it says electric panel too, is that, is that there?
Uh, electric panel is on the outside of that space.
Is that just for downstairs or for upstairs too?
For everything.
For everything?
The hallway and stairs would be about a hundred and twenty-five square feet off of that, possibly eight, twelve, did you say?
Eight thirty-two, was that your number? That was eight thirty-two on the accessory part.
Why'd you take out, Russell, to come up with the eight thirty-two?
Just the garage, right?
This is the garage.
So this wall's, this wall's not right.
I'm just drawing, because there's no way it's...
The garage is bigger than that in the...
But he said, you said that the living space of the house is what, thirty-one by?
Sixty, including the garage.
No, including the garage?
Yeah.
But otherwise, it's thirty-one by?
Yeah, it says, the garage detached is six forty, the raised basement finished is twelve twenty-eight, minus the garage is eight thirty-two for the effective area, and then the first floor is nineteen twenty with effective area nineteen twenty. Just going over the dimensions they have in those.
So the living space downstairs, it's going to be twelve something, right?
Yeah, it's the effective area is eight thirty-two.
But I was looking for, is the common area is considered part of the accessory dwelling area? Because that would be our answer.
Okay.
You calculated that to be?
Around one twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
Rough math, but it...
There are a lot of questions.
I think...
Bear with me, maybe. All right, she might be able to help with some of the questions. So they figured out it's twelve twenty-eight minus the garage is what you had just said?
Yeah, it said it was...
Eight thirty-two.
So the garage is twenty-four by thirty?
Yeah.
There you go, okay.
Yeah, so the sensors got the measurement wrong, because they say it's twenty by thirty-two.
It's twenty-four by thirty-two then. Because he has a pickup truck, so we made an extra long.
For the plow.
For the plow.
Then, these are, these are all outside dimensions too, so it's slightly smaller than-
Correct.
Whatever we, we could calculate ourselves, depending how thick the walls are.
The assessors must have done the outside, the perimeter of the building, correct? And that is?
Right, the perimeter.
They're saying it's seven fifty.
It's twenty by forty, so they'd say it's sixty overall. So now that's actually twenty-four for the garage. Twenty plus forty is sixty, so-
Oh, okay, it's twenty-four by sixty?
So it's twenty for the garage and then forty-
No, I'm talking about the exterior perimeter. The perimeter measurements are?
Thirty-two by sixty.
Thirty-two by sixty.
Thirty-two by sixty?
Is that in the garage?
No. Including the garage, that's the whole house. That's the box.
That's the outside box.
That's the perimeter measurement.
Correct.
And the garage itself is twenty-four by thirty, which I believe is, there's a two missing here.
Um, I think the, it's either thirty or thirty-two, and-
Says thirty-two on the assessing cards.
Yep. But it's twenty, the garage is twenty-four in, twenty-four long. So thirty-two wide, two-car garage, twenty-four in.
So that's seven sixty-eight?
You got what?
Seven sixty-eight square feet.
Oh, we're getting closer.
For the garage.
There's also a utility room that's in that apartment, which can be subtracted out. There's also a hallway.
Yeah, and a stairway.
And a stairway.
And the hallway is shared, because you come to the garage through that hallway, and then-
Yes.
The ADU has a door at the end to get into it?
For egress, but they would use the garage. The, the ADU has a door to the garage as well.
Correct.
And an exterior door, so there's three egress.
Do, does family upstairs have to come downstairs to get to the garage?
Yes.
Does, okay.
So they come down the stairs and use the hallway to go to the garage, but they have a separate garage door. There's two garage doors to the garage.
Yeah.
How close are we?
I'm wondering, did you finish the calculation? Seven hundred and what?
Seven sixty-eight is the garage.
Then you're gonna take out the stairs.
The width of the hallway.
Yeah, they, I'm guessing it-
It's extra wide because we had, we had wheelchair access.
Four feet?
Uh, I think it's at least four feet. It's very wide. So let's call it fifty-two.
I think the stairs says five feet and the hallway looks wider, actually.
Yeah.
That is correct, because we also had a stair chair in the stairway, so they're both, they're both oversized.
For all stages of life, that's, it was designed in that capacity.
So that it could-
Actually, stairs say five feet and a half of an inch.
Yep.
Hallway looks wider, but doesn't have a dimension.
Well, we can call it five and a half feet, sixty-six inches.
It's a little more than half of the unit long?
Oh, it, yes, it absolutely is, because it goes through the, to the other side into the den.
Ah, so this isn't a door?
Is it a door, door to the den at the end of that hallway?
That's how you would act, that's another egress for the apartment.
Right, but there's a door, right?
There is a door at the hallway, yes. We had to separate it for the different-
For different units.
Yeah.
So maybe a hundred and fifty-ish square feet for the hallway and the stairs?
I've stopped calculating, I'm depending on you.
Well, I'm sort of making up numbers here. We're guessing.
You know, something that looks reasonable.
I think you're there.
I mean reasonably accurate numbers.
Yeah, I just, I didn't have an idea for that area.
You can take all that off.
Utility room's seventy-five, so that's two twenty-five.
Are you into the seven fifty?
Well, it depends with the size of-
I have a question.
If the eight, as long as the eight thirty-two's accurate, we would be.
Mr. Attorney, um-
Eight thirty-two is still more than seven fifty.
No, if you take it, the common spaces, right?
Yeah, he's trying to calculate this out, and that was my question. Is the, uh, the common area is not considered part of the accessory dwelling unit? Because I don't find that here. And I'm thinking it's probably in one of these wonderful books, but I'm wondering if you know.
Where do you see that?
Well, it said, it doesn't. I'm just wondering if we can exclude that hallway as part of the accessory dwelling unit.
Well, if it's shared, I suppose we can.
It'd be no different, I guess, than the second floor, right? Like, they can walk upstairs, but it's-
So, okay.
They're digging through the new red book.
Just got it.
I don't think there's anything in the statutes.
Nothing you remember?
I don't think so.
That says we can or can't exclude it?
I don't think this, I don't believe it's in the statutes.
It would be excluded, correct? It's not living space. It's not part of the ADU, and it wouldn't be how the occupant would access the, it's just another means of egress. They have their own door, two doors actually, in the apartment.
So technically, right, if you build, say I take one-third of my basement, right, build a wall, call it an ADU, put a door in it. It's whatever confined in that space, right, is the ADU?
What are you looking at?
Seven hundred and fifty feet of gross floor area. I think we got our answer.
So if that door's closed-
Gross floor area.
Oh, yeah.
Of the ADU.
Yeah, but again, what is gross?
I mean, is gross when you close the door and contain the unit? Is that the gross square footage?
Well, gross to me would include the, the common stairway, or the common hallway. If you're saying just the, you know, the, the, the part that's used as an accessory dwelling unit, minus the common areas, doesn't say that, says gross.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of it, like, if I, if I build a wall down the middle of my basement, and, and one side of the wall's the accessory dwelling unit, and the other side of the wall's still my basement, that I'm storing my junk in, the gross would be everything on the other side of the door that's inside the ADU, right?
Yeah.
That's how I would interpret that. So I'm saying if they, technically, this, this is the entrance to the ADU, when they close that door at the end of that hallway, everything on this side of the door, which wraps around this stairwell on the hallway, is their living space, their gross living space. Just like the garage, right, is a part of the gross square footage. Just because it's in the basement doesn't make it part of the ADU.
You should've been a lawyer.
That's how it happened to Marty.
You know, I have no idea why it says gross, gross floor. You know, I guess what I would think, you know, when I was, if I was just asked off the top, what is gross, I would've simply said, yeah, it's right here, you know, take off the garage and everything else. Right, which sounds to me like that would be gross, rather than more technical. You know, can we do technical?
Could the case be made that the ADU is not using the hallway nor the stairway in any capacity, not for storage, not for anything?
Well, they have to have exits.
They still have two.
Right, it's a-
Two exits in that stairway would be one of them.
No.
Or stair, the hallway.
No, they have two in the ADU. They have one out the front and one into the garage out of that living room. They already have two.
Yeah, but we're looking at the, forgive me if I'm not following here, but this is the hallway we're talking about.
Yep.
And that's the entrance to the garage, that'd be their second.
No, can I come show you?
Absolutely, yeah.
They have two already. They have a front door right here, and they have a door from the garage here. They have two.
Into the living room, so we could exclude this completely?
So this is for the family to access their hall from the garage.
The stairway, uh, the, um, the hallway. See, they've got, um, it requires two doors.
They have-
So here's the door into the garage, this is the door to the exterior.
Correct.
This is another door-
Correct.
To the garage.
Correct.
So, so whoever's in the accessory dwelling unit-
Has this space.
Has this space around that hallway. If we eliminate the hallway square footage, would we need this?
And the stairs.
Would we meet the criteria again? You know, I mean, like, what is gross meant?
Me, gross is all. Gross would mean everything.
The only part would be-
Gross is living space.
It's living space, because otherwise the family that lives upstairs could never use the garage. How else would they get in the house? That was why the hallway to the stairs. Because that's how they use the garage. They come down the hallway, they go up the stairs to their own door, and the ADU-
Completely independent of the two to get to the garage.
So they could have their own separate living space.
Completely independent of one another.
Two separate doors.
Okay, okay, so now I-
We can technically consider that, that hall.
Consider it, but what's the square footage again?
Seven fifty is what I heard.
No, 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 what you calculated. It's in the code, seven fifty.
Seven fifty is what I heard.
So the hallway and the stairs, rough estimate, a hundred and fifty square feet.
So if the downstairs is eight thirty-two and you take away a hundred and fifty, then we've got under seven fifty.
What I'm, what I'm hearing from them, because of the living room having a door to the garage and a door to the outside, those are the two egress points.
And the hallway is another garage, another door.
Don't talk about the hallway. The stairs and the hallway are not shared. There's, there's technically no need for that access.
Which?
There is not a need. You could lock that.
I'm saying they have, they have egress to the garage and the front of the house. So tech, so, so the stairs and the hallway are for the upstairs residents to get to the garage specifically.
Yes.
It's, it's not needed to be shared.
The living room, because the downstairs goes to the garage by itself as well.
To that hallway?
They do.
Technically, you could take the door and you enter that hallway, and, and they would have legal egress-
Don't leave this door.
And not ever need to go in that hallway.
That is correct. The only reason you had it was because you were family. Correct.
You could technically board that up.
Correct, correct.
To make it compliant and not shared space.
Correct.
If we're concerned about the shared space.
Well, yeah, but the people coming down the stairway to get to the garage would have trouble if you boarded up that door.
No, the door is on the end of all.
No, the door is on the inside.
They could just come down the stairs and go through the hallway and get to the garage.
Correct.
It becomes only necessary for the second floor to get to the garage technically, if you, if you closed off that doorway. If that makes all the difference in the square footage.
There would be no issue for either party if that door became a wall, correct?
Yeah, right.
You'd still have egress for the apartment, ADU.
Points.
And the sec, the main home people would still be able to access the garage, correct? That was just because it was family.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of all the provisions we're gonna have to put on this to make sure that the square footage is accurate.
And this is, this is all based on lack of a tape measure.
Yeah, that's just it.
Still.
I don't like winging it.
And I know you're anxious.
To say the least.
Right.
I was going to mention that it also requires the owner to be in residence, and you're selling the house. So your real estate agent needs to know that if somebody is going to use this as a mother-in-law apartment or something when they buy it, they have to live there. It's not gonna be turned into a bed and breakfast or something like that. So make your real estate agent aware.
Okay, perfect. If it's lit, if it's labeled as an ADU, I believe that's, that also is common, common language, correct?
Accessory dwelling unit, yes?
Yes, you're not allowed to rent it out.
Well, under Webster zoning, and zoning is different from town to town, so under Webster zoning, the owner of the house has to be in residence.
Okay.
And then you can use it for mother-in-law-
Perfect.
Children.
But not as a rental property.
But not as a bed and breakfast or, yeah, those types of things.
Not as an Airbnb, understood, yeah. Gotcha.
Or even if you rented it, the rental person couldn't have their mother-in-law stay, because they're not.
Yeah, no, the owner of the property has to be in residence. That's-
And that's what we were.
Yeah, and whoever's downstairs is gonna be a family member.
No.
No.
Doesn't happen.
That's not required.
That's not required, not for an accessory dwelling.
Okay, okay, okay.
But, used to be.
It's not rental property. Can't be rented at all.
Couldn't it be? I mean, you could rent it to your son. He's still a family member. Yes.
Yeah, an ADU. Yeah, that can be rented.
Okay. You can rent it, just have to be the print, the owner of the property has to live there. Upstairs or downstairs.
And the person downstairs has to be an ADU person.
Well, it's the unit, it's not a person, but you know.
Yeah, there's no stipulation on who can live there, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Nothing that I've seen.
As long, yeah, as long as the owner that's in the house.
No, she called Emmett, who tried to help him, gave some information, and then she offered, because my phone doesn't work.
I mean, an ADU doesn't need to be disabled.
And I said you wouldn't want it.
Mother-in-law, right, yeah, mother-in-law, whatever. It doesn't even need to be, it doesn't even need to be a relative. Because obviously, it's somebody who's going to live in a smaller place, because it's hundred, seven hundred and fifty square feet.
What's interesting, what's interesting is you can't, it can't be less than seven fifty, according to state law, but we can't be over seven fifty in Webster, so. You can only make it one size fits all.
You did not know that? I need to look that up, because that's a little difficult to make.
That's a little hard, yeah.
Has to be exactly seven hundred and-
Exactly seven hundred and fifty?
The state is pushing as much as they can get.
I don't know, it feels like Webster might need to address that.
You mean what?
I feel like Webster might wanna address that.
Is that true? If you're, if you're making a unit-
It's just in the last cycle that the state's pushing that.
It has to be above eight hundred, right? But if you're doing an ADU.
Well, they were saying the ADU law says it has to be seven hundred and fifty feet, or larger for the state.
Yeah, and we're saying-
And we're saying it has to be seven hundred and fifty feet or less.
The state's pushing for more ADUs and availability for the housing.
Housing issues.
And that would be, and Webster has to be exactly seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Why do you want to talk to the planning board?
Yeah, that's why I said I'm gonna make a note of that.
So the, the statute right now, the state law says it's gotta be seven fifty.
It says minimum.
Minimum.
Minimum of seven fifty.
Well, that kind of changes this argument too, doesn't it? This kind of changes this argument too, because if the state is saying a minimum of seven fifty, Webster's going to have to change theirs, because-
Correct.
It can't be, can't be exact.
So you're telling us right now that if this isn't exactly seven fifty, we can't approve it?
Okay.
Right?
No, we're not saying that. None of us are saying that.
No, we're saying that Webster's going to have to adjust theirs.
If it's more than seven fifty, we can't approve it under our, our zoning regulations, right?
If I may, I live on Battle Street, and my neighbor is building an ADU and has been for the last year. I don't know who they are, and I love it for them. There is no way it is exactly seven hundred and fifty square feet.
And haven't they come before the ZBIA?
I don't, I'm just, I think we're not.
I'm warning, Webster's getting a zoning enforcement officer who will catch her.
I don't care. I don't care, I love it for them, but I'm saying, seriously, seven, as a builder, seven hundred and fifty exactly square feet, could we be? You're going to change it, that doesn't even make sense, it's absurd. It's absurd.
I wonder how long it's been on the books? Probably for a while.
And things catch each other as they go, but as the state-
This last cycle.
As the state increases what they are agreeing to for ADUs, they're asking towns to be lenient in permission.
Well, the problem with a little town like this is we meet once a year.
I was trying to find the statute, because it might not actually say seven fifty, unless we don't know what it actually says until we look at it, but.
Robert, did you see, look that up?
Yeah, just trying to find it.
What was that?
Trying to find it right now, too.
He's trying to find the state statute.
Are you guys a butters to us?
Yes, we live across the street.
Okay, so if the butters are for it?
We're for it.
There you go.
We live on Battle Street, right across from Call Road, and we're for it.
Are you the one with the welcome sign with the nice yard?
We don't have a nice yard.
I don't even care. I'm just saying, they've been building it for a year. It is definitely not seven hundred and fifty.
Seventy-four, seventy-one to seventy-three, Article-
Six seventy-four.
Six seventy-four, seventy-one to seventy-three. And it's VII. A municipality may establish standards for accessory dwelling units for the purpose of maintaining the aesthetic continuity with the principal dwelling unit. If it's a single-family dwelling, a municipality may also establish minimum and maximum sizes for the accessory dwelling unit, provided that the size may not be restricted to less than seven hundred and fifty square feet.
To less than seven hundred and fifty.
We can restrict it to less.
Less.
We can restrict it to seven fifty.
So the state's saying.
Well, it puts us in a squeeze. And our zoning says it can't be more than seven fifty.
Right. Which is.
Which needs to change.
I think might have to change, yeah.
Yeah. Cause we're gonna run into problems trying to enforce that. I'm looking at the ADUs.
Are there any other comments from anybody?
No, I'm gonna look at our AD.
What was that?
I'm looking at our AD rules to make sure it does say it's one hundred and fifty square.
It is five, 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 eight.
Yeah, it does say seven hundred and fifty square gross area.
I was reading the citation.
Yeah, right.
Exactly seven fifty, no, larger than seven fifty here, and gross here.
What are these laws put in for this town?
Eighteen eighty-two.
I mean, things have to change, you know, that's.
This, this is relatively.
New?
Yeah, this is pretty new. We're just a little behind.
Seems to be just within accessory dwelling units in the last few years, correct?
You know what, I have the old book, this changed this year.
Yeah, this is the, this is the new.
The red one's the new one.
Yeah.
My last one was white.
What year's that?
Twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and this is twenty-four, twenty-five.
This is, this is twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, six seventy-four, seventy-three.
Eight. I'm sorry, I need to write this down. Four?
Six seventy-three, six seventy-four.
Six seventy-four.
Colon, seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Uh, VII. It was the same in twenty-two to twenty-three. I'm not sure when they changed it.
Wow, that's a long one.
Okay, this is interesting, I'm sure. Because this says that this, um, this six seventy-four, seventy-two.
I'm his other person.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Was in action twenty seventeen.
Been a few years, it's been a few years now.
What's interesting, though, is this also was zoning ordinance. That was also in twenty seventeen, interesting, because that's the last time, according to.
So did Webster change it and then the state changed it?
So the state changed it and the state's changed it again?
I don't know when the AD regulations were adopted.
No, I appreciate.
Yeah, it could've been like that.
Could've been twenty fourteen, thirteen, you know, I'm thinking, this might've been.
We really appreciate it.
I'm thinking seventeen.
Well, seventeen is the last time the zoning ordinance was at all.
No, it was amended last year, so there is a revision.
Okay, but anyway, we know this wasn't done.
No, this wasn't done.
Yeah.
This is gonna be talked about at the next planning board meeting.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I got a whole list.
That's why you're here, right?
Yes.
See, I think the best way to do this would just be do this as a variance. Except if we did it as a variance, that would take another month. Because we'd have to, because we have to notify everybody that it's a variance, not a special exception.
They wanna sell the house.
Right.
Is there any way we could say yes tonight? Is there a way we can get there?
No, definitely can't do that.
Because it's not exactly seven hundred and fifty square feet, is that, is that the sticking point currently?
That is the big sticker, yeah.
Well, to, to Webster regulations, if it's not seven fifty or less technically, is the town.
I'm, I'm guessing, you know, regardless of whether it's under seven fifty or it's over seven fifty, either way, unless it happens to be exactly seven fifty.
Well, let's say it is.
Don't towns have to meet state regulations as the minimum first and then they can amend stronger from there?
Definitely, definitely the statute takes precedence over the zoning by the town.
But both state folks were seven fifty or greater.
Right.
We limited it to seven fifty. Right, because this, because this has under seven fifty, right? That's the zoning, but it's saying in here, it's gotta be at least seven fifty, if not larger.
Well, it would certainly meet the state requirement because it would be the minimum of seven fifty or greater.
And when did your state requirement change, you guys?
Seventeen, it looks like.
Two thousand seventeen.
That, that far back.
Wow.
Well, yeah, it's at least seven, at least twenty seventeen, if not early, prior to construction of this unit.
Well, the state's been making great strides in giving towns permission to say yes, to house people.
So the state changed it in two thousand seventeen, it isn't something they just changed this past year?
It wasn't this year.
Okay, it was further back.
Yeah, it's, it's in this book, it's in this book.
Okay.
It's in this one.
I thought I heard you say that.
I know that's been, the state's been pushing more and more.
So the state, actually, I thought went back to making them smaller, that it could be six hundred or greater, because they're trying to encourage people to, to build ADUs to eliminate some of the housing.
Shortages.
Shortages, correct, yes.
Yeah, it could be something even newer coming.
Yep.
So theoretically, Marty.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
I'm just gonna, Rob, which, um, which is it, the one which says the.
Six seventy-four.
Six seventy-four, seventy-two.
I know, six seventy-four, seventy-two, which one is the one that says the size?
Uh, VII.
VII?
Number eight, or number seven, under.
Seven or eight.
Twenty-two, I think.
Oh, yeah, this is, right, and as, as she just mentioned, you were perfectly right. They're saying in here, in the statute, that it's to get people to make a larger, right? As opposed to our zoning, which says make it smaller.
Correct.
I guess the big, big question is the whole authority of what the zoning board can and can't do.
It, that's one of my questions, but the other is, do.
Because it says municipality may establish standards.
But they have to make the state minimum, right?
Okay, well, we have established a standard, but can we exceed it? I don't, I don't know that the voters gave us the authority to exceed it in Webster. Maybe the state, but.
But if your state statute takes precedent over.
Right, yes, definitely the state statute.
I mean, it's not like it's huge.
Right, if you took us to court, you would win.
Yeah.
Correct.
Technically, yes.
Pretty sure.
I don't wanna do that.
But we don't wanna do that.
We don't, no.
I wish we had some accurate numbers to work with. Be more confident of this.
Remember this is special, special circumstances, special why it was brought.
Sure, yeah.
And like you said, it's still over state minimum, so. And if you, the state statute takes precedence, then it's over the seven fifty. What would, like you said, he could take it to court and he would win, so.
I know, but I still think it's going to take a variance before this board to do that.
Or, yeah, what our, what this board.
So I think, I think what we could do.
Oh, Tamora McElravy, seven, six, two, Battle Street.
I'm sorry, Marty.
So I'm thinking what we can do is, we could violate the zoning, okay? We would say that we are not regarding the statute, not the statute, the zoning, which says less than, it has to be less than seven hundred and fifty square feet, because we believe.
It's in conflict.
That the, yes, that the statute says it's gotta be more than seven fifty.
Right.
So we, and so we will challenge the zoning.
Yeah.
And yes, somebody could, could say, I'm objecting, and they could ask for, of course, they'd ask for, you know, first, dealing with us for an appeal, and if we say no, we're still, we're still doing it, then again, somebody who was opposed to this could then say, I'm gonna take it to court.
They would have their due process if they chose to.
Yeah, yeah.
I would find it hard to believe there would be a single person.
Oh, yeah, right, I'm sure.
That's exactly what I feel.
Nobody's objecting.
And then we can address it at the planning board soon.
Right, and then, yeah, right, yes, and the zoning, yes.
Right.
You know, the planning board could say, hey, you guys are wrong, we're, we're challenging you, and they could take us, you know, and, you know, I've seen that before, where you have, you have in court, in, in the court, you have both the planning board and the ZBA opposing each other.
It does happen, because planning board is designing to establish what your town wants, zoning board is the interpretation of such.
Right, yeah. So, so anyway, I think that's what we could do. We could basically, and this would be the first time I've ever done such a thing.
I think that's brilliant.
Yep.
Always a first time, Marty.
Yeah, well, yeah.
All, all in favor?
Yeah. So I think what we can do is, well, first of all, let's.
Go through the process.
Finish the process.
First of all, anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
I'm in favor of it.
But, well, you, you, I think you've spoken enough. But let's hear from, I, I, first I wanna hear from anybody else, yes, go ahead.
In favor, yeah.
Identify, you've identified.
Donald McElravy and Tamora McElravy, seven, six, two, Battle Street, we're in a butter, and we're in favor as long as you guys are, which we hope you are.
Okay, and then if there's anybody who wishes to speak in opposition, okay, then I'll close the.
Public input.
And, and open it up for discussion by the board. And, and so anyway, I think we, what we could do is we can simply say, um, we think that this zoning ordinance is wrong because it violates the.
It's, it's not. It's a local amendment to a state statute, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, okay, I mean, it says, it says it can't be, it's gotta be less than seven fifty. Doesn't it say?
We say less than seven fifty. I can read the end. State said more. Six seventy-four, seventy-two.
May not have more than, okay, so this says it could be seven fifty.
But not more.
But not more, and the state statute says may not restrict, um, yeah, may not restrict to less than seven fifty.
So it's seven fifty only.
Right.
It's the only one that could conflict a both laws.
Yeah.
Which is impossible. It's not possible, but it's, it's unrealistic to require that.
I would say let's, um, quote chapter and verse. Yeah, and, and then if the, if the planning board wants to take us to court.
We gotta lay.
Right.
We can all quit.
Who's gonna represent us?
What?
I said, who's gonna represent us?
I don't know.
Who's gonna get our attorney? Well, another, yes, who would the town's attorney? I will worry about it later.
Well, they'll just have to run between you.
Right.
Right, yeah.
If it became an issue, the party that's charging against the other one would get the attorney and then they would have to contract out for another one. I used to be planning board up in Tilden.
Oh, okay.
On Northfield, I should say, yeah. I know, because it's a big waste of money, because it's two pots of money you're paying out too.
Oh, yeah. And I, I think that.
We get bigger fish.
Yeah, and, and we have to come up with a realistic range of allowing you to build something.
Yeah.
More than one number.
Yeah, right.
Are we setting up a precedent we won't want?
Well, I think we are setting a precedent.
Yeah, but.
Right.
Consequences in future, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, but I think. Anyway, um, let me hear from other, other members of the board.
I don't mind doing this.
I, I don't either. I think the man has suffered enough, had, had aches and had shifts that. Yeah, but that, that I think we would use was a variance, but we're not talking about a variance here. So this is simply, um, regardless of, of hit, of this particular, right? This is something that basically we are, are dealing with this seven fifty. This, you know, here it's less than seven fifty or it's more than seven fifty, and I think because it's, because we think that the more than seven fifty should be, because that's the state statute.
State statute overrides us.
Yes.
Right, so.
Cut and dry.
To set precedent and limit, limit the unlimitedness of that precedence, right, so you can't build a ten thousand square foot ADU? Can we, can we refer this to planning to say, to recommend that planning sets a new upper limit?
Oh, sure, but that, but that, that comes obviously separate.
Right, but just, yeah.
You know, in March.
To ma, just to make sure that, yeah, it's not just the precedent that says any size is good.
You gotta be in the room, it's gonna be at the planning board, it's gonna be agenda.
Not that I'm worried that we're gonna get a lot of.
Yes.
I'm, I'm still really uncomfortable with being unable to say, this is how many square feet in this accessory dwelling unit, while we're challenging Webster's local amendments. It would be nice to have those numbers. Any way to get it?
Yes, right now? No?
No.
Tomorrow? Absolutely.
Sure, yes, really, I would feel a lot better if you could actually come back.
You'd have to post a new meeting and all that.
Then you'd have to get a new meeting.
You would, you could approve pending the numbers meet conditional to the numbers, and then you could, could complete that transaction tonight. Otherwise, you would have to repost and all that.
I can, I can tape measure it for you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah.
But I, but I.
We'll grant this.
Conditional.
Right, conditionally, based on you will come up with a number that is more than the seven fifty.
Well, that's absolutely.
That's possible.
Yeah.
But not too much.
But not like two thousand square feet.
I don't know.
Seven fifty and one inch.
Yes.
I mean, the statute, and I'm talking about the, the state statute, it just says seven, it has to be more than seven fifty.
Right.
But it's not defining the seven fifty either. I mean, is it, do you, should you include the hallway or not, right? It doesn't say that.
Well, if I lived in the upstairs and I was renting to somebody that I wasn't directly related to, I would lock that door, and I would never let them use the hallway and the stairs, because that's my space, which is what you did, not that you locked the door, but that was.
We put locks on all doors to that stairway to isolate.
It was on purpose. It, it was just.
To meet that intent.
It was just on purpose, thinking down the road.
To give the privacy to the individuals.
Correct.
Yeah.
It was thinking ahead, because you don't wanna have to redo things.
That's common sense.
Correct.
Common sense is not so common these days.
Could you, could you cut that right?
You could put a wall there and it would affect nobody.
It's always been that way. Anyway, anyway, just come up with the numbers.
I will give you some numbers tomorrow. All right, when would you like them and who should I bring them to?
Give them to Russ.
Of course we do. Is there anything you don't?
No.
You said you were on vacation, that's.
And you need a total?
Wow.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna be gone for the next two days, so.
Oh, yeah, you're at the moment.
You have Dana's email, right?
Is Dana in tomorrow? Can I just?
Yeah, you sent it to Dana.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Okay. And you just wanna total this?
I'll send him a text.
You could probably email it.
Probably email it.
Do you guys email it to Dana?
You don't need to.
They not yet.
We do have.
She can skate downhill.
I could, I could ride my bike.
But you could easily make a, if you, how, a motion and approval conditional on the numbers validating what has been discussed.
Right.
And that will then keep you within the posting and all that nightmare that if you step away from tonight, comes into play.
All the legal requirements of us.
Yes.
Okay, so, so, how do we, how, I was gonna say, yes, yes.
I'll make the motion for you. I know how to do it.
I'm sorry, I'm so good. It's really not okay.
Why are you moving to Tillman? Why don't you stay here?
Too much trauma.
Too much.
Too much trauma, that's reasonable. Otherwise, I would, that was the intent.
Yeah.
Well, given that they need all the other, aside from the fact it was built before they showed up here, they meet the criteria, all the other criteria in our local amendments. So, the only thing we really have to focus on is going to be that square footage. How do we craft this?
And I would say that square footage means state requirements are, are better. I, I think we should actually put in there something about, say, this board believes, um, that it is, um, that, you know, five A is, uh, not in alignment with state statute six seventy-four seventy-three, Roman seven?
Okay, yeah. We are allowed to restrict it, but it should be restricted to, to something more realistic to meet state requirements.
Yeah, something like that.
Were you getting that, Dana?
I'm like, Russ, I'm sorry.
I wish, bring it somewhere else. Um, no, I was wondering if this, you've been before the select board?
No.
I have not. There's something in here about the select board passes it off to us, so that made me question.
No, they changed that, I'm allowed to pass it off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. They, they delegated that authority to me to avoid that step because it was.
Good idea.
Um, another thing that needs to be updated in the local amendments.
Yeah.
Who has the authority? Okay, so did you get what they put together as a motion?
Well, you were involved too.
No.
You haven't made a motion yet. I know that you're putting in the objection, or stating that you believe this is in compliance because the state law supersedes local regulations. With the state statute as opposed to the zoning. Yeah. Five, five A. And you're doing it on the condition that you get the measurements?
Yes.
Right.
And your condition of the measurements is greater than seven fifty. Just, I just want to specify it.
Seven fifty gross.
Exactly.
Right, you know, so to me, I would say seven fifty is, you know, just take, you know, the downstairs and subtract the garage, you know, and.
You have a solid measurement for the garage and the overall perimeter, you can subtract the two and make that happen right now.
I thought we didn't have.
Yeah, you didn't. You have the garage dimensions minus the outside perimeter.
I think it was eight thirty-two.
Okay.
If you, if you want that.
Yeah, I would, I would say, to me, that's the gross, right? Instead of getting very technical and say, oh, we take off, you know, five feet here for the utilities and, you know.
So it'll be thirty-two? Is it forty by thirty-two? Because it's twelve hundred and eighty square feet.
Yeah, minus the garage, you said, correct?
Minus the garage.
I thought you were saying that forty by thirty-two was minus the garage, no?
No, the garage is twenty-four, so it's thirty-six.
Bobby, please, let me, I can't hear, I'm sorry, I'm just a little deaf. What was the dimensions?
Garage is twenty-four long, so the dimension would be thirty, uh, thirty-six.
So thirty by thirty-six?
So the overall house is sixty by thirty-two, so sixty long.
I'm sorry, thirty by thirty-six? Is that what you said?
Overall house is thirty-two wide by sixty long. The garage is.
You take out the garage.
Garage is thirty-two wide, twenty-four long.
I'm just looking for that length.
So then when we take twenty-four out of sixty, you get thirty-six? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thirty-six. But then there's other pieces in there, so that would be thirty-six by.
I was looking for the gross.
Thirty-six by thirty is nine hundred, a thousand eighty. It's more than seven fifty.
There we go.
Okay.
That was the numbers I was looking at.
But if you're too, if you're nervous about it being that big, you could take out the common areas.
Right, and all the stairway.
But I'm saying for now, let's just go with the gross.
Gross, okay.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
And I'm saying, what is there?
Did you say, you said thirty by thirty-six?
I don't know, what was the, what was it?
Thousand eighty.
Did you say thirty by thirty-six?
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Yes, thirty by thirty-six, sorry, you did it, yes.
That's the garage.
So that's nine, that, that, yeah, no.
Thousand eighty.
So that was sixty by thirty-two overall.
Yeah, I got it. I got you. Thousand eighty, less the common area, less the utility room.
Okay.
And that's edge to edge, so you have to take in and take in and take in.
Right, let's just go with the gross.
It's fine.
Because Webster statute says gross.
Right.
And that would be the thousand.
Okay.
I mean, so it's, you know, so we're gonna be challenging the zone, and, and I think we should do it.
Sounds like a plan, sir.
Okay, so, we have the, do we have the final?
I didn't write anything down. I was doing calculations.
That's what Russ is doing.
Russ is trying to.
Going all over the place.
I know, we were, and it's kind of hard to follow.
That's why I'm saying I've got the, the motion, we believe the state law supersedes the local zoning because it's changed.
Oh, not in the last three years.
No, the state law. Just, yeah. The state law supersedes the local zoning.
Correct.
So you're granting the ADU at a thousand eighty square feet. Right. Minus the common area, minus the hallway.
We're not making a decision, anything?
Forget that.
Because it's just gross.
It's just thousand eighty gross.
Right.
And I brought it up a year ago.
Okay. Gross. And that's just it, okay?
Yeah.
Did you want the chapter and verse state code that we're violating?
You'll get that.
What we're getting in compliance with?
I can look it up and put it in there. Right, yeah, put in, you know, um. That this law supersedes the local zoning, because it, state law says it must be.
Must be greater.
Greater than seven fifty.
Right.
What do you want from me, right?
So did you make that motion, Marty?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, well, let's record attendant or attendants.
Yeah.
Let's record the vote. Marty Bender?
I'm in favor.
Barbara Corliss?
In favor.
Robert Drew?
In favor.
Robert Cleges?
In favor.
And Dee Blake?
In favor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for making a night exciting.
That was.
We haven't even started yet.
It's a little harder than normal.
Forget about, you know, measuring it.
You don't need it?
Right.
Okay.
Because it doesn't make much difference, I mean, let's say it was, it turns out to be, you know, ten thirty-two instead of ten eighty, or, it doesn't matter, it's clear it's over seven fifty.
It is over seven fifty, that is correct.
Right.
And Webster would have to put in a reasonable size restriction.
Yeah, well, yeah.
In the future.
Well, that is the request.
A margin, a margin of more than exact.
So, yeah, it'll be interesting to see what happened, what happens.
See soon.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
The zoning board will.
Thank you.
Good old.
Right, thank you.
Be interesting if. And I'll get you the approval. You can stick with it.
Thank you for coming.
If the state statute is wrong.
Yeah.
It's going to be fine.
Marty, I am grateful for your expertise, I would have known how to craft that.
Were you doing these minutes or?
Oh, yeah. Minutes.
Yeah, no.
Do we have minutes?
Yeah, in the back of the, in the back of your thing.
I forgot when the last meeting was.
I don't even remember what they say.
Like, when was it?
I was like, I said, I did them, and then I saw them, and I'm like.
I'll stay.
No, no, I'm good. I don't think it's.
No, it isn't. I typed it in an hour.
I might swear.
I appreciate that.
I almost just already. Okay.
I was waiting, though.
Are you guys all set with me?
Yes, thank you very much, thank you.
You should.
Uh, well, I'm ready.
Don't forget, you've got to wait, you know, I mean. Technically, you have thirty days to go. Right, just in, you have to wait thirty days, just in case somebody challenges. So if you were gonna put it on the market, wait thirty days for the. So the measure. No, I would say you could put it on the market. You know, you're not gonna get it.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're gonna sell in thirty days.
We'd like to, we'd like to be on by next week.
Yeah.
It won't be closed in thirty days.
No, definitely not.
You know, technically, remember that this can be challenged within thirty days.
Yes.
Right.
If they do, then that will slow the selling process.
Because there's nobody else here, right?
And who is reading the minutes?
This is also.
You were appointed.
You haven't been at Webster long, have you?
Now I know who to go to. No, barely, I'm just barely here.
I think we should make, I make a motion that we accept last on October eighth.
What's that?
On the board's adjutant meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would second that.
What were we doing?
Yeah, that was when you were approving the other ADU.
Yeah, that wasn't the last time, right? Across the street on.
Yeah, that was the one next door.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Couldn't figure out it was two floors for a limit.
Barbara, second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
All, all were in favor.
Across the street.
It, it's on that.
All right.
Get in there.
Kind of just up from town right here on the, nice and north side.
Yeah, I did too. No, that was more complicated than I thought.
Off the river, isn't it?
Before we pack up, can I ask some questions?
Go ahead.
Before we pack up, can I ask some questions?
On the wrong side of the table.
So we're getting an enforcement officer, correct?
That's what I understand, yeah.
I'm digging right there.
Where are we at with that?
Posted to me.
It's been posted, and we have one candidate who's interested in that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we don't have a candidate?
One candidate.
Oh, we have one? At least there's one.
In town or out of town?
In town.
Question.
I have some concerns.
You have what?
I have concerns.
Oh, okay, fair, here you go.
About, about the officer?
Well, so, no, 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 no. So, you know that I had concerns about having enforcement. So we're addressing that. I think we're on a good path for that. But I've questioned myself in some of my votes, and before I join up again, I talked to Marty, um, I've talked to John Clark, who's on the select board, and I've talked to a planning board member, and I have, I have some concerns. And I started reading this again, which is very dry, as we know. And my concerns are numerous, because I think this needs to change a bit. I'm not criticizing who wrote it, I'm just saying we're getting to a point where we're, our, our town is evolving, okay?
I'm sorry, Sue, what is this that we need to change?
Our zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No arguments.
No arguments.
Okay, so the first thing is, is that I tend to very, very much go with agriculture. And I called Marty and I said, told him everything that I thought that I'd messed up at one time, because after I read this, I was like, maybe we aren't supposed to go with the theory of what I think, which is, I think we're supposed to encourage agriculture. And you guys are nodding.
We're residential agricultural.
Correct.
Yeah, I think Bobby might be kind of in favor.
Me too.
But.
Yeah, I'm not at the family anymore.
When you.
So now you'd be anti-agriculture.
When you go through the purpose on page three, the only thing that I see is it says on number thirteen, which is page four, to encourage the preservation of agricultural buildings, lands in buildings. That's not agriculture, that's preserving the land. And I question, should we ask the planning board if you, if you guys think, maybe it's just me, it could be just me, okay? Do we want to say to encourage agriculture as a lifestyle, or promote agriculture as a lifestyle or an industry? Because it is, it is part of our zoning.
It actually has no place in zoning code. Wouldn't it be in the master plan?
Yep. Well, is it there?
And if it is, why is it in our zoning code? It has no place there.
Well, it's not. But, but when I, when I base my decisions, sitting here on the board, I always think, well, this person is farming.
Yeah.
And then I lean that direction, which you got upset with me about. So then I think I'm doing wrong, when I'm not. But they, but, because Marty said, no, you, 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 it was for agriculture, so it's fine. But I don't see it here. So I sit there and I go, well, where is it? You know, am I wrong in promoting agriculture? These are questions I have of myself.
How about who wrote it? Um, land and buildings for the propulsion of agricultural growth crops.
But isn't that in the master plan?
That's, so that's the question I have.
Zoning should support the master plan.
Zoning is, zoning is just enforcing the rules of a plan that are passed through planning, through the select board, through.
We're gonna be doing a master plan update next year.
Yeah, plus a hope and a wish.
Next year, so I want, I want to see that, because I think that that's part of it.
The master plan goes to, you know, that, the zoning supports the master plan and the ZBA supports the.
Because that's what we're gonna be winding up to redo the master plan at the end of this year, starting next year. And it might take a year, maybe two years to update.
Okay, so my next question is, page five. No, excuse me. Page six. No, excuse me. Page six. Number two, a building lot shall have no more than one single-family residence, commercial establishment, or manufactured housing unit thereon unless otherwise permitted by special exception. So does that mean, just to be clear, that we only have one family resident? Or we have one family residence with a commercial establishment? Is that a special exception?
I, I think a family residence with a commercial exception, and if it's going to be a second residence, they've got to have a special exception.
Right, A D U. A D U is right in there, right?
All right.
It's something that is.
A commercial establishment. So let's go back to commercial.
Okay.
Person has the right to have a residence.
Hang on, commercial definition is, any use of land or buildings for the purpose of manufacturing, repairing, or selling at retail or wholesale a product, goods, or service.
So you're.
That's commercial.
You're a commercial business, according to that definition.
Right. So can you have both on the same property?
You can have your house and you can have a commercial business.
Just checking.
If you have a special.
My special. Coming up with something that I see an exception to, because I've never heard of any exception to that. Your, your, your business can be on your property with your residence.
Right, okay, okay. But that's a commercial, a commercial entity.
Right.
Okay. So then, you go to home products, maybe bought, sold, and exposed for, say, a Wimms district.
Right.
Because I think that.
What is a home product?
Thank you. I've been saying that for years.
We don't have a definition here, but we have a definition of what commercial is.
Right, because, yeah, because Suzie and I were talking about it.
And I was talking about it on the planning board before, that we really need a definition of home products, because that's a very large category of things. If you ever look on it in Webster Dictionary, it covers any product that's used in the home.
Yeah.
So that could be a dishwasher, like, so somebody's manufacturing dishwashers, that counts as a home product?
And that, and that is kind of.
The problem.
There's a, there's someone that I know that makes lights for helmets. I don't believe they've ever been in front of the Z B A.
Lights for helmets?
For helmets. There's a lot of stuff going on in this town. It's just like your neighbor selling parts out of, that's a commercial enterprise at this point, correct?
Right.
And that's why I got frustrated.
Cars, right? And he still hasn't come before the Z B A.
He's parting out cars?
What?
He's parting out cars?
But he's, he's selling cars, right on his property.
Kirby. Uh, doesn't state, doesn't state regulations say you can't sell more than three without, without a license?
Well, if he has a state license, he certainly hasn't come before the Z B A.
So, back to home products and commercial enterprise, here's something. If you have a home product and you start making birdhouses, let's just say widgets, birdhouses, whatever.
Yeah.
Is that considered a home product?
Yeah.
But at what point, you guys, does the trigger flip? You become Dunk Craft. You know what, you know what I mean? I'm not being.
A million birdhouses, yeah.
What concerns me is, you know, somebody who is selling, oh, let's say, plants that they're selling right now, right, that they, that they started in, you know, in their house, right, and they're selling plants, right? That seems like a home product.
Home product, yes.
Right, however.
Or if they have them in their yard and they're dividing them. Eleanor Kimball is a prime example of that. She used to do it all the time.
Yeah. On the other hand, what if they're also selling, you know, a, a bag of mulch, or soil?
Or, or buying all the plants. Because remember, when I got my exception, Bobby, you might remember this. I'm pretty sure it was your father told me I had to grow seventy to eighty percent of my product to be considered agriculturally based. Now, that was in the nineties.
Yeah.
And it probably doesn't even mean anything, but.
I don't know what it is now. I'm not on the board of the town bureau anymore, so I don't know.
But, that's, that's neither here nor there. So, I just think we need to do some work on this. And I know that, I've spent some time going through it, and my frustration is personally, okay? You guys, none of us have time to waste. And to sit here and do all the stuff that we do to help our community, and then have it not be enforced, where other people are just getting away with stuff, is not right. It's not right to anybody that's come before us. Like, the guy that wants to sell fish, Shinos, down on, you know what I mean? He, he jumped through hoops to do that.
And to your point about enforcement, we can't enforce things that aren't clear.
Clear.
Like, I don't even understand what a home-based business is, and I don't know why anybody would come to us if they're like an accountant doing taxes that happen online and nobody, like, at least you can see your neighbor as a home-based business, right?
But is that a home-based business, or is that a commercial business?
What's, what's the definition, right? Yeah.
He's, he's buying, he's buying his product from outside, so to me, I would consider it a commercial business.
But there's commercials.
I'm sure there's somebody who's def, who's defined it, we just have to find.
But there's, yeah, we've got like three categories of business.
So here, here's one other thing. So you have, say you have, just, just think about it, because I think we're going in this direction, and I really like, personally, I like the farm stand thing. But, but just think about this for a minute. So somebody's daughter or son owns a restaurant. They get organic produce. Their father lives out here, mother and father live out here in Webster, and they say, geez, oh my dad, I can buy an extra case of this, an extra case of that, you can throw it out beside the road. That, in my opinion, is not farming, and that's not a home-based business.
Right, right.
So that's like retail. And that's where we need to start thinking, because, I mean, not to mention the fact, and I don't, some of these farm stands, we should look at where they are at. You don't want to regulate everything. But think of the accident that just happened up on Battle Street. That was bad.
I don't know what accident you were.
I mean, everybody's fine, but, oh no, the car went right off the road the middle of the day and cleaned up.
Died a stroke.
Yeah, medical emergency. It could happen anywhere.
What's it got to do with?
A farm stand? Think about it.
Was he on the farm stand?
No, but what if there was a farm stand beside the road in the right way? Think, I mean, where are we, I think about things, because I, you know, I'm hearing this stuff and.
The state's right away, I believe, for one twenty-seven, it's seventy-five feet. So, in other words, if you had a farm stand there, you'd have had to bend back a whole lot away from that telephone pole that he hit.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't be here. You know what I'm saying? And that's something, I mean, it'd feel horrible, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
And I mean, do we have guidelines for that? I mean, I don't know. I'm just plunking out things I think about, because they're things that are brought to my attention. You guys wouldn't, it's like, it's like the battery-operated cars. When I said to you, you don't want those coming to town, guys.
I was thinking about that with that deal tonight, with those, that garage next to a residence, that, that fire over at.
Lawless?
Lawless's the other day. That was caused by one of those type of batteries.
It was caused by a lithium battery.
Yeah, but if you put a lithium battery in a car in that garage, that egress is not going out through that garage.
I just bought a car with three batteries in it.
Have fun.
That's why you have two egress, right? Because one's blocked.
No, but it's just things, and I'm not trying to be a.
No, 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 but.
I know what you're doing.
We need to see it from another set of eyes.
And, and I, and I see it, like, I hear it from Emmett, and I, I, and I, I'm in the plant world, and I have a business, and it's like I told Marty, you know, people don't think of this, but I have to get a license every year. I pay for a license every year.
From the state?
The state of New Hampshire.
For?
And I said to him, it's like, you wait, and you're going to see the good in this, okay? So you pay your money, you pay twen, I pay twenty-five dollars, I write, make a list of everybody I buy my plants from. It could be thirty, thirty wholesalers. They come from all over the United States. Because I buy my plants little, grow them on, and then sell them, so they're my plants. Last year, the state came in, they were very stoic, you need to look at your plants. I'm like, okay, sure, no problem. And they're walking around, we were closed. They walked all around, they told me how good everything looked, and then they said, we're here because one of the people you buy from detected an invasive species.
Oh, jeez.
But that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
You know? And then they told me all about it, and I could monitor that. What about these farm stands that are popping in bread? We may all like it, stop there and buy their bread, but is their kitchen licensed?
Well, same thing would be true for the church suppers downstairs. I mean, it's not, whatever they're cooking at home and they're bringing in, that wasn't done in a commercial kitchen.
Well, that's not a commercial kitchen downstairs, technically.
Well, I haven't, I didn't know about that. I don't want to know.
No, but you, you hear where, I'm not trying to be, and I talked to Marty, and he said, no, Sue, you should bring these ideas out.
You should. You should. You've got another perspective on how things are going in town that I wouldn't have. So yes, you should bring those things to the board, or to anybody.
Like, you go by the deer, I don't, the guy that sells all of his products out by the road, I think it's awesome.
With Jeremy down next to me?
Yeah, it's, it's awesome. But he's right there on the road.
Yeah.
What if somebody parks there and somebody rear-rents them? I mean, I know it's not our concern, but.
That's the operator's fault.
It's our, yeah, but still, I mean, it's, it's not a safe, I mean, at least Irwin's, Irwin Smith's, it's not Irwin's, but I call it Irwin Smith's house. He's got the nice little turnoff, there's a little farm stand there, they sell cordwood, they sell a bunch of stuff. It's cute. It's, they pull, people can pull off the road, turn around and leave.
Yeah. See, that's, that's like with me, with my turkeys. I can sell up to ten thousand turkeys a year.
Right.
And I don't have to have a license. After ten thousand, I gotta be checked by the state.
How many friggin' turkeys do you have?
Two hundred.
Ten thousand, that's crazy. That's a, I wish that.
Are there?
Pretty big turds.
Oh, I, I have bunches, but I just, I was wondering if, I talked to Marty and I said, can we, he, he suggested, let's have a group meeting with the planning board, or, or a work meeting together. I mean, it's getting late tonight.
Right, didn't we do that last year?
Yeah, but we're looking where we are. A year later, we're finally going to get somebody to do our.
Right.
Which is, we knew it would take a while, because of.
Right.
We need to go through town.
Well, aside from home-based businesses, were there other things that are not well-defined and should be?
There are. Trust me.
Yes, yeah.
Can you make a list?
I have made a list.
No, I'm happy to go through it. Like, I think we can't fix everything, but I think.
No, but we could make things better.
Things that.
There's a lot of residences that we don't know.
Especially thinking about having an enforcement officer, we have to make it so he can do his job.
Yeah, like, it's like, when does an agricultural business need to apply for a commercial exception?
Right, like, there's.
What's the trigger?
There just needs to be a clear threshold, yeah.
I'm going to say that's very tricky with state.
I wonder how you define that one.
Well, there is a section in the bottom that it says that the primary purpose of, must be agriculture, as in, I would say they have to do, most of their money has to come from the farm, and the side gig just adds to that.
Has to be raised and grown.
Well, I think it more comes down to, because you're allowed to do agritourism now. So they could have barn parties and cater events on the farm.
Right, but.
But I think the primary funds that go towards it must be from the growing of crops, not the tourism part.
And you have to grow them yourself. You can't be buying them in. And that's what your father was getting at with me. I'm pretty sure it was your dad. I mean, that was a long time ago, you know?
We may all dial them up and have.
Yeah. But, you know, but that, that's, I mean, I was thinking, what is a home business? Is it Avon Herbalife, office, home, when a person?
My long.
Well, I've also brought it up to the board. It's, do we really want the person who's the home accountant, who's just having an office in their house, having to go through the entire Z B A, and going through the entire planning board for site review, just to have an office in their house?
Like, that doesn't make sense.
God, I do my son's books.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's like, is that something the code enforcement officer could do? Go look at the house plan, look at the site, and then sign off on it if it's under a certain amount of size?
Right.
If you're doing, so, okay, so if you're doing. I mean, I don't know. Does anybody here remember when I opened up my?
I do.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, because my dad, mom went to you. I found that well, by the way.
I'm sorry.
Well, so I, I opened, I opened my office, you know, I, I made my garage into an office space. Right, this was, God, when did I do this?
It would have been in the eighties.
Nineteen eighty-two.
Yeah.
I was just going to say forty years, Bob.
But I went and I got, I went before the Z B A, before I was on the Z B A, right? When I became, you know, the, the next year, I became, you know.
The Z B A.
Right. Um, but I just assumed that I needed to come before the Z B A, because I was going to be opening an office with, you know, I had to show, yep, I have only so much traffic.
Yes, because that's, that's.
Because they were.
I had enough room, you know, for.
Yeah. Like, you're going to have a sign, you're going to add traffic.
That's right.
If you're just in your house on the internet, I'm not sure we care, right?
Yeah, right.
You're not affecting the town.
No, outside don't affect.
Yeah, right, it's, it's more about how it affects.
Yeah, the commercial, it's all, it's all, I mean, I'm sure you've read it, it's.
Yeah. Well, you can have a pretty big business and just be, you know, on your computer in your bedroom.
Oh.
Technically, you know, a commercial business even.
Yeah, you might be, let's say you're making a hundred thousand dollars, but, you know, are you interfering with anybody in the town?
Affecting the community, right?
Now, the other thing is, let's say they make Suzie have a permit, and then Joe Schmo down the road puts up another greenhouse. Are you going to make him have a permit if he grows all of his own products? I would say no, because it's homegrown.
Today, the way things are, you really can't grow all your own stuff, and I'll tell you why, because plants are patented now. So if you want to have any plants, you, you gotta play the game, pay the royalty, get the pot.
I disagree with that. I'm going to visit you tomorrow to get the things that I will not even start.
I disagree with that. I don't think you've got a law if you're growing pot plants and stuff like that.
You guys laugh, but I did, I, I said, Marty, what does this mean? What, what law? And he goes, well, you can't grow pots, so. Okay.
Again, not this year, right?
I was idiot. I said, no marijuana, that's the law, you know? That was one of my questions.
Right, you just have to get in your car. You can't do it.
I, I just, I just think that if we, it's something we can all work on, and if we, we can either, A, come together, it's what you think we should do. I, I don't know, but I just, I think we need to clean it up.
I agree.
I'd like to know if we are running, if you are seeing, um, issues in the office on the things that are not clear in code.
That happens all the time.
Okay, that, I want that list.
People call me.
I know people that are looking.
And ask me questions, and then I have to go and figure out. I have to do my best to interpret what the regulations say.
Well, that's no different than what we do here.
Yeah.
And then I have to sit there and say, eh, I think that fits, or eh, it really doesn't, you should probably go before the board. Usually, there's a little bit of that before that.
Super ambigu, ambiguous.
That's part of the problem.
There really isn't a definition, and a home business is, I had never thought of it.
Well, right.
But home, but, um, if there's more things like that, we probably should be tackling them.
Well, that's as if somebody's selling their stuff on Craigslist. Is that a home business?
I don't know. I, I.
That's one of the problems we're having.
Put our brains together to solve that.
When does, when does it become a home business, because you've exceeded some.
Well, when does the home business become a commercial business?
Right, yeah.
It's, it's traffic, is what it is. And it, and if it's affecting traffic and traff, traffic flow, then you need to pay, I mean, that's my thought. Or, if a person's buying in all their product and just retailing it, because there's a precedent for you, when's Walmart coming? Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to be.
Right, and that's the point of, there's so many laws.
No, but, but if you're buying in all your product and you're selling it, you're breaking our zoning law, our zoning law, correct? Yeah.
Well, if you buy, if you buy a load of logs and you've got a saw, sawmill, that load of logs is agricultural. Once you process it into a two-by-six, it becomes commercial.
I don't, you know, my biggest fear.
See, you see that?
We end up, we end up creating laws for things that we will never run into. I'd like to focus on, what do you see?
Right, solve, solve the problem.
Well, let's, so it's agriculture, is what it is.
Okay.[1752.71]